Recently, the True North Organizing Network hosted a school board candidate forum at Crescent Elk Middle School. We spoke before the forum with True North Community Leader Patricia Black.
Well, tonight, True North Organizing Network is presenting a Delnart County Unified School District School Board Candidates Forum, so that everyone in the community can hear from all the different candidates and decide who they want to vote for. We hope to have a community turnout that's going to represent the rich diversity that we have in our community, and I hope that everyone will get out to vote.
Getting out the vote is only one piece of True North's work. Instilling the community, and in particular its youth, with the participatory democracy bug is really the heart of True North's mission.
True North is a wonderful organization, is our local affiliate of PICO, which is People Improving Communities Through Organizing. And True North is founded in Delnart County, the tribal lands, and Humboldt County. It is an organization rooted in the value that everyone should have a voice.
And having a voice in a democracy is more than simply setting up chairs and microphones. Preparing for the School Board Candidates Forum was a months-long process involving dialogue, activism, and sweat.
Well, this did take an awful lot of work. It's the result of months and months and months of listening to people in the community about what their concerns were. And specifically this summer, listening to a group of youth through the civic engagement module that was offered during the summer. So, the youth came together with the adults and together came up with the questions that are going to be asked. And these questions reflect the concerns of the young people in our community as well as their parents.
So now that the tables were in place, the multimedia ready, and the candidates present, it was time to open the doors and let democracy happen.
My name is Hilda Yepes Contreras. Delnart has been my home since I was six years old. At that time, I entered the first grade as a monolingual, Spanish-speaking student. Since then, three generations of my family have been educated in Delnart schools. I'm a member of the leadership team working to establish True North Organization Network and Humboldt Delnart and Tribal Lands, because I am impatient. I am impatient for the authentic community conversations and decision-making processes that include all ethnicities. I am impatient for our local schools to graduate with skills for me to hire them. I am impatient for us to turn our attention to the values we all share that will then allow us to find creative solutions to the problems facing our community. Tonight, we have invited all the candidates running for Delnart Unified School District Board of Education to talk with us, so on November 4th, election day, you can make an informed decision about who will best represent this community. But the real purpose of tonight's meeting is much bigger than this.
Tonight is about building power to create change.
Tonight is about the community of Delnart taking ownership of our education system. The future of Delnart is in many ways independent upon us educating world-class citizens. Our children are this community's future parents, employees, business owners, medical professionals, taxpayers, voters, and governmental leaders.
Tonight is about building power to create change. There are about 100 people in this room, almost the amount of people who are typically the deciding votes in an election for the Board of Education. We want everyone here making a commitment to vote this November. And if you are not eligible to vote, encouraging your friends and family who can.
Finally, tonight is about building an inclusive community. That is why a diverse group of youth and adults from different parts of this county are leading this meeting. It is why we're translating simultaneously in Mong and Spanish and providing childcare, so all families have opportunity to participate fully. I would now like to welcome Dr. Paul Joseph Yang to the mic to introduce our organization.
Gouloube, you're Paul Joseph Talkandian. My name is Paul Joseph Talkandian. I am a Mong American. Tonight's forum is hosted by the True North Community Organizing Network, a nonpartisan organization. True North is currently being established in tribal lands, Delnart, and Humboldt County. We are families, elders, youth, and individuals of diverse faith traditions, races, cultures, and economic capacities. Together, we're united by common values, working to achieve dignity and equality for all who live in our region. True North is a member of the PICO National Network, a people improving communities through organizing, one of the largest community-based efforts in the country, working in over 140 cities and 17 states. We believe that people should have a say in the decisions that shape their lives. We trust democracy and the principle that organize and vigilant citizens are the best defense against special interests. We believe that ordinary people know best what their families and community need, and that their voices may need to be at the center of political life. We believe that when people have power, they can protect the things that are important to their families and their communities. And that one way to have power is to build strong, broad-based democratic organizations. We believe that strong democratic organizations are rooted in the needs and resources of local communities. I would like to introduce my sister Karen Sayer to share some of the victories we had at True North and some expectations for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. My name is Karen Sayer. I'm a trained public health nurse and have lived in this community for seven years. I am a member of True North Organizing Network, because this is the group where I have found I can express my love for civic engagement and the democratic process. Community organizing is about regular people working together to find solutions to identified problems in the community. In Delnart County, groups of people have been organizing for over three years. Some of our community organizing victories include Sunset High School students worked to create healthier lunch options and improved their weight room equipment. Smith River families won commitment from Delnart County to provide open gym at the Smith River Baptist Church while they awaited their gymnasium to be finished. Upper Yurok Reservation residents won resources for the first prescribed burn for cultural resources, and the youth at Coastal Connections reduced young people's access to alcohol at Safeway and Walmart. We are excited to hear how the candidates will respond to the questions we've prepared. Now, before we do so, I want to go over some background and expectations of our meeting. This is a nonpartisan forum, therefore, we do not allow any signs, literature, or materials that endorse a candidate or a political party. We believe in a culture of respect. If you hear something you agree with, we invite you to clap, but please, no booing. Please set your phones to vibrate. We want to respect everyone's time, so we have agreed to limit our meeting to two hours. We ask all speakers to please stick to their time limits. Our timekeeper Emily will help us. Tonight's five questions were developed by a team of youth and adults. These questions are based on ideas that emerged from listening to and conversing with over 150 youth and adults in our community. All candidates were invited to attend tonight's forum, and each received the questions in advance in order to develop their thoughtful responses. We will not have time to take questions from the audience during the formal part of this agenda. However, we encourage you to write your own questions on the cards we have included in your packets. We will collect these cards and provide copies of the questions to the candidates, so they can hear what our community cares about. To encourage individuals' follow-up from the candidates, there is a place on the card to include your contact information. Also included in your packet is our program agenda, the questions we will be asking, a voter commitment card, and a form that you can take notes on. On the back of this note-taking form is information about the new way in which California schools are being funded. This is called the Local Control Funding Formula, we will be referring to in tonight's meeting. Thank you, and enjoy the forum.
Thank you, Karen. Now it's time to meet the candidates. We have offered to invite all eight candidates. One candidate could not attend and has reported her responses for us to hear. We are going to have each candidate take a minute and a half to introduce themselves. We will begin with the candidates for District One. Please state your name and your prepared opening statement. You each have a minute and a half.
Good evening. You hear me? Okay. My name is Don McHarler. I'm running for reelection to the District One position on the school board. I've been a resident of Delnart County since 2002 or so. Before that, I lived in Coos Bay, where I was in private practice. I have a master's degree in education specializing in guidance and counseling, and I have licenses to practice psychology and counseling in Oregon. I now work with the College of the Redwoods as a learning disability specialist. I've worked with young people throughout my career in a variety of settings for many years. I have a strong commitment to ensure that our young people, all of our young people, have a path to participation in our community and our economy. As a community, we need to ensure that as our children move up through the grades, they do so in an educational system that does its very best to nurture and to challenge them. Our job as community members is to advocate for our schools and kids and to work to provide the resources so that California can once again have a world-class educational system. Together, we have made great strides in moving education in Delnart forward despite perilous fiscal times that we have just come through. It's been tough, and there have been some hard choices. I believe throughout this period, I've demonstrated my ability and willingness to listen, to hear, and to think carefully and analytically about our choices and our priorities. We are often, maybe always, choosing between worthy competing priorities.
Time to... Thank you.
Good evening. I hope so. My name is Mel Dryden. I grew up in Southern California. I worked for and retired from the Finns Oil Company. I was a supervisor of quality administration at the time of my retirement. My wife and I came to Delnart County, technically Crescent City, in '05. Now, we have four grandchildren who are in or have been in the Delnart City School. I want to run for school board to help the students receive the education that they need.
Hi, I'm Lori Cowan, and I just wanted to thank True North for having this and hosting this forum. It's really important to me, you know, to keep politics out of the school district and focus on what is really important in the kids. I am currently a school board member for the district in District Two, and I'm also a mother of four children in the district. Having four kids in the district really gives me the knowledge of what's happening in our schools. As many of you know, I'm a very involved parent. I'm very hands-on. Our children started off in a private school here in Crescent City, and when that quit, we moved to public schools. At that time, I found it wasn't so easy to get involved in the classroom as it was in a private school, so I started looking for other ways. When I was first asked to run for school board, I was hesitant. I didn't think I could do it. But then I realized, if I wanted to see change, I had to be that change. The last four years, I've been very involved with what's going on in the district. I did a lot of things with Delta, which is the teachers and administrators and community members, putting together, looking for what we could do for our children in Delnart County. We asked the question, what do we want that graduate to look like when they come out? That from Delta...
I'm sorry, Lori. We need to move on.
No, I can't. I got a light right now.
Good evening. My name is Angela Carino. I'm running for District Two. I am a boomerang kid. I grew up in this area, went through the school system, saw many changes, went away to college in Southern California, and decided, I want to change my community. I need to go back. So I came back, and I became part of different organizations. My first job was working with the school district. I moved to RHS, First Five, learned about early childhood education there, and then had the opportunity to work with Wild Rivers Community Foundation and Building Health in Communities, which then spawned this wonderful organization here. It is so great to see these youth here, and I just want to say thank you, guys, for stepping up. I wish I'd had that opportunity 10 years ago. I am running because I want to bring ABCs back to the board: accountability, balance, and communication. I want to make sure that we are keeping accountable as we are representatives of the people, that we have a balance, we're hearing both sides of the story and treating each side with respect, and also communication, making sure that we can communicate out what is this new policies that are happening. How well we communicate will determine how well these policies are running. So that is what I am running for, and that's what I hope to bring to this board.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Forkner. I'm running for District Number Five in the school board. I am a lifelong resident of Delnart County and a graduate of Delnart High School. I've been married for 16 years and have three children. My daughter is a 2012 graduate of Delnart and currently attends Link Community College, and my two boys are currently students within the district. My experience includes 10 years in finance with eight years of that in government, three years of owning my own business, and five years in human resources, 23 years of volunteering for youth sports and activities in Delnart County. Three of my goals when elected to the school board are to provide a safe and clean learning environment for each and every student, to establish long-term financial stability for the district, and ensure transparency within all aspects of the district with open and honest communication. To accomplish these, I feel that everyone must be given the opportunity to voice their concerns or complaints to school board members without fear of reprisal. All schools need to become a place of pride by providing a welcoming environment with some much-needed maintenance. We must be persistent in seeking other funding opportunities for our students' education. An honest approach and creating awareness in situations involving school district decisions is imperative. The community needs to be made aware of issues facing the school district. I can guarantee that I will always base my decisions about our children's future on the needs and merits of each issue. I will never base any decision on what is politically safe. There is no justification whatsoever for politics when making decisions about our children's future.
Good evening. I'm Beth Green. I have lived here since 1956, graduating from Crescent Elk and Delnart High. In August of '65, went to work in the library here at Crescent Elk, having the loyalty, dedication, dependability, integrity, trustworthiness, and responsibility to work with students, parents, and district staff for 39 years. This was my one and only job as a library coordinator here until I retired in June of 2004 due to health reasons. I served nine years on the Personnel Commission Board and 11 years on the Dinoco's Federal Credit Union Board before going to work there for six and a half years. Knowledge of budgets, policies, and procedures, and the working of the district, I feel I am qualified for the board position. Students have always been top on my priority list. As if they weren't here, none of us would have a job. Please consider me when you go to vote, and I represent District Five. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ronnie Sorensen. I'm a veteran of the first Desert Storm era. I was born in California and did most of my growing up here in Crescent City. I graduated from Delnart High School before joining the Army. When I got out of the military, I brought my kids back here to raise, and I put them through the public school system. They're grown now, but one had special needs and one was extremely gifted. They both required a special sort of education that they did not necessarily get without my intervention. I worked for 12 years for the school district, doing budgeting and accounting. A lot of that time, I worked in the business office, working directly on the school revenues and budget. All of the revenues that came into the district came through my fingers at one point. I assisted with the rollout and implementation of the first year of the LCFF, the Local Control Funding Formula. I saw quite a few things that I feel could be managed better to bring about a better result for the students of this community. I love this community, that's why I brought my students back here to raise. I love this school district, and I know that my knowledge can provide a value to the families of this school district. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Janet Powers Wardman. I go by Jan, and I'm so sorry I cannot be with you in person this... Hello. My name is Janet Powers Wardman. I go by Jan, and I'm so sorry I cannot be with you in person this evening. I'm in New Zealand, awaiting the birth of my third granddaughter. I wish to thank True North for organizing this event and for all of you for attending. Let me introduce myself. I am yaya to two beautiful, amazing granddaughters. I'm ready for school board, because I want Delnart to be a school system that my granddaughters can graduate from and be successful, pursuing a great college or a great career. I'm also running because I'm a business owner, and I know how vital and competent workforce is to having a successful business and a thriving economy. I own the Repoit Inn in Klamath. I was born in Crescent City in 1957 and then lived in Oregon for years. I moved back home in 2004. Each day at the Repoit Inn, people from all over the country are amazed and overwhelmed at how beautiful our county is. I agree, this is an amazing place to live. The diversity, the ocean, the river, the redwoods, all add to the beauty and the uniqueness of Delnart County. When I speak with the leaders in our community, again, I am overwhelmed with the diversity and the strength and dedication that many people in Delnart County bring to the table. We're currently at a fork in the road, where we will not accept complacency. We will not accept the lowest test scores, graduation rate, high teen pregnancy rate. We are ready for change. The State Funding Formula is an opportunity that could allow us to address our own issues. With coordinated, active leadership, we will be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to welcome Amber Janssau and Alberto Gonzalez to the mic to share what we have learned from the community and our civic engagement work.
Good evening. My name is Alberto Gonzalez. I'm a leader, leader of the True North Organizing Network. I was born in Crescent City and I lived here my entire life. I have attended Delnart High School, Castle Rock Charter School, and now I'm a senior at Sunset High School. As a future voter, I am grateful for everyone here, because you are going to make the decisions that will impact my education, the education of all the students in our community, including my younger sisters.
I agree. Hello. My name is Amber Janssau. I am proud to be both a Yurok tribal member and a member of the True North Organizing Network. I'm a 2011 graduate from the Klamath River Early College of the Redwoods. Even though generations of my ancestors have been here since time began, we've only been able to exercise our citizenship through voting for the past 90 years. Given the disparities in educational outcomes for native students in our county, it is very important that we have a school board dedicated to proving, providing an inclusive quality education for all students.
True North was... We believe, at True North, we believe that power rests in the relationship we have with each other. This is why we always start with listening and sharing our stories. Since July, we have listened over to 150 youth and adults in Delnart County and survey 200 people about their experience living here. We learned that many people lack trust in our government and want more transparency and accountability. Many people experience barriers to participating in civic life or even understanding the systems of government.
We also looked at the voting trends in Delnart to better understand who is participating and making decisions about our future. While approximately 60% of eligible voters are registered, far fewer actually vote. Even when the turnout is high, only 30% of overall population is deciding who controls every aspect of our local government. This is more alarming when we look at the low numbers of the younger people who vote. Of the 3,880 people in Delnart between the ages of 20 and 30, only 35% of them are registered. If we registered at all the same rate as people over 30, we would make up an additional 900 voters. Why is this important? This is important because in Delnart, the difference between whether a candidate wins or loses is decided by a very small amount of people. For example, in 2012, one candidate won their seat by only 37 votes. Tonight, we are here to learn about the candidates for the Board of Education. In 2012, a school district representative won their seat by only 322 votes. Here in Delnart County, your vote really can make a difference, because our margins of victory are so small.
We believe democracy works best when everyone participates, so True North began to process of engaging those who vote in low numbers: youth and young adults, people of color, and those who live in lower-income areas. This summer, 65 of us went through a two-day workshop about the power of half-hour vote. We learned about upcoming local elections and conducted nonpartisan registration drives. We talked about our shared values and identified common problems we face here in Delnart. We all talked about the school system, since this is a part of our daily lives.
This graph from 2011 shows the percentage of high school students who strongly agree they feel safe in their neighborhood school and at home. The red bar shows us that, on average, only a little over half the students said they felt safe from harm at school. At some schools, like Delnart High, only one in four students reported feeling safe. We believe that every student needs and deserves to feel respected and free from physical harm, intimidation, harassment, and bullying.
We would also like to see the cultural diversity of this area reflected in the types of studies available. For example, we would like a Mong language class and curricula that reflects the Native American communities in this region, so we can learn about another's histories and cultures. In April 2009, the Delnart Unified School District and the American Civil Liberties Union of Northern California, or ACLU, entered into a settlement agreement. In the agreement, all parties quote, "Mutually recognize that fostering and promoting a positive school climate sensitive to the cultural histories and identities of all students is a central component of academic achievement in the prevention and reduction of a student's discipline." This agreement outlines several steps that the school district would take prior to August of this year.
Since the agreement went into effect, some things have been made included. Reducing the total number of students suspended and expelled, conducted some professional development, teaching Yurok language and developing, and partially implementing some of the curricula that teaches the history of the Yurok tribe. However, in certain areas of the agreement have not been met, specifically those around professional development of teachers and staff, and fully implementing and monitoring the implementation of the curricula designed to teach students about the history, culture, and language of the local tribes. And while some progress was made around the suspensions and expulsions, both parties agreed more could be done, especially around reducing racial disparities. As a result, the ACLU and the school district agreed to extend portions of the agreement in the addendum for an additional three years. All four local tribal councils signed on this addendum.
You don't always have the access to the classes we need, or classes aren't prepared enough for college or career. This graph shows average wages of people in our community based on their level of education. We're showing you this because people with a two- or four-year degree are much more likely to have jobs that pay enough to support their families.
This graph is from a report by the California Center of Rural Policy. The red bar is represented... The red bar represents the percentage of students from Delmore High and Sunset who were unprepared for math and English when they took the placement exams to enter College of the Redwoods. The number representations are the average over nine academic years, from 2001 to 2010. This slide shows Delmore graduates who have the necessary classes to enter a California State University according to the California Department of Education. The top line is the California average, which has increased consecutively for the last five years. By contrast, the percentage of graduates from Delmore schools have the necessary courses to enter a CSU school has been declining. The numbers are especially low for graduates of our county Office of Education and School Boards.
In August, the True North members from all over Delmore talked about the concerns we are hearing in the community and low voter turnout rates. We want to increase voter turnout in Delmore County, but sometimes people don't know who to vote for. That's why we decided to host a candidates forum. Youth are most interested in the Board of Education because how much it impacts our daily lives. This fall, three of the five Board of Education seats are up for election, which means our community has elected the majority of the seats. In Delmore County, everyone votes for a seat. That is why it is even more important for us to have a community-wide discussion. We would like voters representing all areas and all people in Delmore County to help determine who will be making the decisions about our education.
The Board has certain powers like adopting the budget for our schools. The budget is a reflection of our community values and priorities. For example, it determines if we have big classes or small classes, what programs will be funded and offered, and how much money is spent on new textbooks and current technology. The Board also approves the curriculum, what types of things will be taught, and how. It sets policies about what grades are considered passing and the graduation requirements for our public schools. This background helped us in preparing tonight's questions.
Thank you, Amber and Alberto. We will now commence with our questions. For those of you in the audience, questions are listed in your program and you have your note-taking form. Candidates, our timekeeper will give you a 30-second warning and then a time-up card. Some of the questioners will ask their question in their native language. The English translation will appear on the slides and is available in your programs. We will start with District 1, then District 2, and finally District 5. We ask the candidates to rotate the order you speak in within districts. I'd like to welcome Jeremiah Gane to vote in.
Good evening. My name is Jeremiah Dimatayan. I am an American migrant heading Delmore High School. I have been in Crescent City for a little over a year, and there have been many occasions where not only myself but other students have felt unsafe because of racial stir and stereotypes. Students need to feel safe and valued in order to learn. Youth identify bullying and harassment, especially of certain racial groups, sexual orientation, and those with a disability, as a problem in our school system. Students also reported that it is common for discipline policies to not be applied uniformly. Students of color tend to receive harsher discipline measures. Yada, saitou ko, ko yo tolu de shre picha hatu ke zu minyo, shi tanha zuke jauzi, jong liyam jauzotu. The first question is, if elected, how would you hold the district accountable for reducing bullying and should carry the discipline policies applied uniformly?
I drew a short story. I would hold the district accountable for the problem. The school must, 1, identify the bully; 2, identify the student being bullied; 3, make the parents of the student responsible for the actions. I did that! Are you sure? Okay. Make the parents of the bullies responsible for the actions of their children. Produce a written record of the incident and actions taken and results of the incident. There is a website called Kind Campaign, an anti-bullying website available to everybody and all school districts. It's by Laura Paul and Molly Thompson. But five things this website recommends to stop bullying are: 1. Remember that it will always, will not always be this way. 2. Ask for help. 3. Talk to the bully or write a letter. 4. Learn how to forgive. And 5. If you see bullying going on, don't be a bystander. Thank you.
Bullying and similar traumas are now understood to be very serious issues which can affect learning and also have the potential to alter neural development. That in turn can predispose young people to a variety of ills throughout life. I and the board and district take this issue very seriously. There are two broad responses. The first, in line with work priority to create safe and welcoming schools, is positive. We aspire to affirmatively create environments in our school in which expectations for safe and respectful conduct are school-wide norms. As a result of district actions, suspensions have decreased from 12% to 6%, which is the state average. The Board holds the district accountable by periodically reviewing school discipline programs and records and through the oversight process for individual schools and the district as a whole. The second approach, other than the positive, is to provide supports and interventions for students who are struggling whether as perpetrators or victims. To address this, we have radically increased the counseling staff available to schools. To address the consistency, we're working to implement PBIS, or Positive Behavior Intervention and Support, which is a program with the goal to implement a district-wide, consistent and proven system for behavior management. Because human beings are human beings and because every student and situation is unique, there will always be some consistency, but the goal will be fairness and equity in how youngsters are treated within the schools.
As a board, we are currently looking at and working on our bullying policies. As a parent, I've seen that bullying is very prevalent in the internet. And have, and also has had to deal with it personally recently with two of my kids, both on the playground and on the internet. I can assure you, I take it very seriously, and I do believe the district does as well. As, you know, we have been looking at all the different policies and trying to bring in the, you know, the whole concept of the internet and how to deal with that. Also, as Don, you know, talked about, we're also in year two of PBIS training, which is the Positive Behavioral Intervention, and working in all the schools in a unified way so that we're doing the same thing. I, as a board member, would continue to really work on that and make sure that it is not happening in our schools and make sure that we do everything possible to take care of that. With PBIS right now, the district has, it's worked very effectively in reducing suspension and incident rates up to 50%.
So as you have heard, the district has been engaging in PBIS training and is in its second year and it is proving effective. But we need to continue making sure that it is congruent amongst all the schools, all the teachers, all the staff, all the students, and all the parents. We need to make sure that it's not just in our K-38s and Sunset, but also included into Delmore High. We have to keep congruency because no matter where they go, they need to be knowing that the same policies that were here at Crescent Oak are the same policies that are happening at Delmore High School or at Sunset High School and vice versa. Anti-bullies, bullying, anti-bullying policies need to be congruent as well. They need to be from site to site and school to school so that parents know if they move their child from one school to another, they know that they are getting the same exact disciplinary policies. We need to make sure that there's fidelity and congruency with how those policies are being given out. We, there is in part of the PBIS, PBIS, where they go and they make sure that the questions are being answered correctly and that everything is being followed through. If the community doesn't know these expectations as a whole, it won't work. And so we need to make sure that we are doing very well communicating, these are the expectations, these are the behaviors we expect you to have at school, and then following through the same disciplinary process when those are not being followed.
I feel that the key to reduce bullying is awareness. The district needs to focus on setting clearer policies, communicating those policies, and making all students aware of the effects of bullying. Every student must be educated as to the effect that bullying has. Mental and health issues for those who are bullied, also the effects from bullying themselves. Statistics show that 1 in 4 elementary school bullies will have an adult criminal record. Awareness is the key. The bullying policy, as well as all district policies, must be enforced uniformly regardless of ethnicity or gender. The policy must state, if you do an X action, then you get the Y punishment. If you continue to do that action, then the punishment should be increased accordingly. The district must have set policies in place with what the consequences are for bullying and for any other action requiring discipline and clearly communicate those policies. If the policies are clear with set consequences for the actions, they would be enforced and applied consistently. When policies are vague and open for interpretation, you get a different reaction according to how one interprets them, and therefore they are not enforced properly and consistently. We need to set clear expectations and rules and then make sure that they are followed.
The district has an outstanding discipline policy in place that all certificated and classified work together as a group in a positive way. Students work to be safe, responsible, and respectable to everyone in their classrooms, cafeterias, offices, on the bus, and everywhere in the school site. For the last 15 months, I spent volunteering two mornings a week out at Pine Grove. And I thoroughly enjoyed the time out there, and I saw this starting to be working into place because last year was the first year. This year, I'm committed to something else right now, but I'm hoping to go back. Thank you.
Okay. So the Board of Trustees has adopted a policy concerning bullying. I did some research into the board policies. That policy number is 5131.2. And when considering a matter such as this, there are two documents that are generally adopted by public agency trustees. The first is the board policy itself. The other is administrative regulations. Administrative regulation is important because it's the part that directs staff on how to apply the policy. My initial review of existing board policies and regulations indicate that there has not been a regulation adopted on the subject of bullying, at least I couldn't find one easily. I agree that the subject of bullying appears to be addressed and equally by the current administration. I do, I have been seeing the training on PBIS and I do like the PBIS training that I have been seeing and I have been conversing with classified staff that have been receiving that training and I know they like it very much. But to bring consistency in applying these rules, I would advocate for the adoption of an administrative regulation directing staff on how to handle these matters and provide all necessary training to ensure fair and equal application of the regulation in all the schools. And I would make sure that there was communication and transparency with parents and the community across all the schools, especially in the outlying communities, to make sure that they understood what the regulations were and everybody was being treated fairly.
I believe that all students in Delmore County can be successful given the right time, support, and opportunity. It is not okay that certain groups of students consistently underperform other groups. Statistically, my league of American grandchildren are much less likely to graduate from high school in Delmore than others. California State Constitution affirms that students and staff have the right to attend safe schools. Therefore, the school board has the moral and legal obligation to ensure that every student experiences a sense of belonging, respect, dignity, and safety, and that every teacher has the opportunity to teach. If elected, I will support policies and strategies that research shows will create safe schools, such as the restorative justice efforts the district has started. Research shows the most effective bullying prevention models are where students understand that they have the power to create and attend a school where cruelty and bullying are not tolerated. Students are the most authentic voice for the cause and are capable of helping to tailor and refine prevention and intervention strategies to meet the needs of their school. We also need to look at what is working locally. Last year, Beth Maxwell lowered their suspension rate. Something is working at that school. We need to recognize and reward this positive change in our schools. The topic is too important to ignore. Research shows that 60% of the boys who are bullies in the grades 6 through 9 were convicted of a crime as adults compared to 23% of males who were not bullies. This is a clear example of what happens in our classrooms, happens or will happen in our community. We haven't ever mistaken how successful the schools will be in this arena. Thank you.
I just want to remind the districts if you could rotate through your district, please.
Hello, my name is Edua Peachwing. And I'm an artist and communicator and activist. I've lived in Klamath all my life. I attended Mark Keating Delmore High and Klamath River Early College of the Redwoods in Klamath. I went there for a record because it offered a chance to learn my cultural heritage. And while learning standard high school curricula where I live, it made going to school more interesting and more rewarding. I'm here to, I'm here to speak up for the kids in Klamath who are again left behind. And I'm here to say, we True North Organizing Network are here to stand up and be heard. In May 2014, the Delmore County Unified School District began a three-year extension of its agreement with the American Civil Liberties Union to improve educational outcomes for students of color. The extension continues agreements relating to professional development for teachers, staff, and administrators that is race-conscious. And focuses on cultural competence, diversity, and implicit bias. It also calls for the implementation of curricula focused on local Native American cultures and language in 3rd, 4th, 5th, 8th, 11th, and 12th grade. What are your ideas on how to ensure these agreements are met over the next three years?
During the course of the recent review process, process which led to the renewed agreement with the ACLU, the board had the opportunity to review all the correspondence between the administration and the ACLU and also to review the program review conducted by the administration itself. All aspects of the program were under review and the ACLU complimented the district on its efforts. Representatives of the ACLU appeared at a meeting of the board to address their review. I believe that the ACLU process is robust and that it ensures that the board has knowledge of the progress made and the progress yet to be made. It is important to note that the consent agreement was entered into by a previous board as a result of a suit which came about because of decisions made before the time of, before Lori and I were on the board. I understand the possible lingering mistrust of that community and I want to assure you that this... and I want to assure you that this board, the administration, and so far as I know, the entire staff are completely supportive of the need to be culturally respectful and also to embrace our cultural diversity as something which enriches us all. We fully support curriculum focused on Native American culture and language and professional development focused on reducing racial bias and increasing cultural awareness. We will honor the agreement in letter and in spirit.
This question assumes that the only children of color need special attention to improve their educational outcome of the students. It is my position that all children of Delnor County need special assistance to improve their reading, writing, math skills. This includes the Native Americans, the Mongs, the Latinos, the Black, and the White children. Things that I will do: One, familiarize myself with the details of this agreement. Two, monitor the progress throughout each year. And three, make necessary changes to improve the success of the program.
The lawsuit was settled in 2009 with these agreements, and they have not been yet made in the last five years when they were supposed to be. And I want to make sure that we are compliant with these agreements by 2017 deadline, if not sooner. We need to integrate not just learning about our local Native American cultures and tribes, but also our Mon community, our Hispanic community, and learning the history of Delnor. We need to learn about our logging industry, our fishing industry, the different minority groups that have come through Delnor County and have shaped this county for what it is and how it's being used. We know that sometimes history isn't pretty, and sometimes it's not perfect, but it's our history, and we need to learn it and we need to embrace it, not just in elementary schools, but continuing it on. Unfortunately, I didn't learn the history of my community when I went through high school just 10 years ago. I found it accidentally in a library college bookshelf. And I looked through it, and I was homesick for Delnor County. And I was like, I had no idea about the Samm wars. I had no idea about how the Chinese came. I had no idea about the logging industry. Why am I learning this now outside of my community instead of inside my community? I want to make sure that changes and that we can push through these policies to make sure that we are culturally competent to our students and that our students know the history, that they know where to go forward because they know where they came from.
Each year, the district is required to report to the ACLU on the progress of the agreement extension. I will monitor reports to ensure the district is making progress on professional development, the curriculum, and the reporting data. All the curriculum is currently on our website. You know, it's all laid out there for everyone to see and to find out firsthand what our children are learning right now in our schools. There is professional development going on. I myself also just attended a staff development just this past August with Dr. Jennifer Everhart, who was up here from Stanford. And we will continue to do staff professional development as well as work on curriculum to teach our children our history.
The district has had a culture awareness program for a long time. I had lots of books, kitchens, posters housed since 69, and I did. However, it was used as an option to teach. At that point, the information's been redone with lots of knowledge by our local longtime educators from the elders of the life to implement its lessons in its grade levels. This is great because I am a Native American. I don't look it, but I am from a pioneer family in Humboldt County. And Patrick's Point State Park was my mom's homestead ranch. And there's a big rock at Cranell that's a Princess Rock, and that was named after her grandmother. So, thank you.
First, it is important for me to say that I have not personally read the agreement that the district has entered into. One of the initial steps, one of my initial steps would be to understand what the agreement requires, what steps administrative staff and the current board have taken to satisfy the settlement, and what remains to be implemented, and assess the plan the board has adopted to improve the educational outcomes for students of color. Secondly, understanding the importance of our cultural diversities as well as the obligation of a school district to provide competent education to all students served within the community. If elected, I would seek regular updates concerning satisfying the objectives, terms, and conditions of the settlement agreement so that another extension of time is not required. For me, the bottom line is ensuring the students of today have the benefits and best opportunity to be successful in their education path. This means the changes need to happen now to benefit the current students and not three years from now.
I believe that all students in Delnor County can be successful given the right time, support, and opportunity. It is not okay that certain groups of students consistently underperform other groups. Statistically, my made of American grandchildren are much less likely to graduate from high school in Delnor than other students. And if they do graduate, there's an even smaller chance that they will have the required classes to attend a university. This is not okay. When elected, the issues of equity, ensuring that all of our students are supported to be successful regardless of race, gender, income, or neighborhood, will be a top priority for me. ACLU lawsuit is one chapter in a much bigger story about inequity in Delnor County schools. And I see it as an opportunity for the school board to sharpen its focus on ensuring all students are achieving. I've learned that our partners, the Building Healthy Communities Initiative, have offered additional funding and support to us as we tackle this complex challenge. A few weeks ago, a trainer on race prejudice presented to district staff, Dr. Everhart from Stanford. I'm excited to support further plans of the district to engage in any ongoing work on equity, race, prejudice, power, privilege, implicit bias, et cetera. But I believe that creating equity isn't a program. It is an underlying value upon which a district should operate. My candidacy has been endorsed by the York Tribal Council and the Smith River Rancheria Tribal Council. I'm committed to working with our local tribal governments to build on what's currently working and to better connect the district and the tribal efforts at the board level. Efforts like Title VII, the NCA DC Education Center, and the American Indian Report are examples of local efforts that I will ensure that the school board is part of, the answers to improve educational outcomes for Native American students. Thank you.
As from what I learned with looking into this, the curriculum for grades 3, 4, and 5 have already been developed, so the board will need to ensure that they are implemented and evaluated. Next school year, the board will need to take to make sure the curriculum for grades 8, 11, and 12 are developed, implemented, and evaluated as well. Then continue to evaluate annually and work with the American Indian Advisory Council to monitor. We will also need to ensure that annual staff training on cultural competence, diversity, and implicit bias at the previous training from the National Coalition Building Institute was not effective. However, the actual title of this agreement is Reduction in Student Discipline Agreement, and its intentions were to quote, "resolve issues concerning high rates of exclusionary discipline, disparate disciplines of students of color, particularly Native American students, and racial harassment." As I stated previously, we need to have set policies that there is no room for individual interpretation. We have got to be consistent with discipline. Regardless of race, color, or gender, if a student is doing an action that requires discipline, then they should be reprimanded according to its policy. I will absolutely not tolerate persons of different nationality receiving harsher or reduced punishment from someone else doing the same thing. Everyone should be treated equally. I believe, like the vast majority of parents and community members that I have spoken with, who think that we do not need to involve the ACLU and pay them hard-earned taxpayers' money to do something that seems pretty cut and dry. All students, regardless of race or gender, should be held to the same disciplinary standards.
Hello, my name is Ashley Sweeney. I am 14 years old, and I am a freshman at Delnor High School. I have lived here my entire life, and I am a member of the Krick tribe. I am one of the students who attended the civic engagement workshop for other youth, and I talked about the changes we would like to see at our schools. We shared our stories, including many students. We shared our stories, including the challenges many students face in our school system. The third question is, under California's local control funding formula, school districts have more flexibility to spend money and improve schools and receive additional revenue on top of their baseline funding for low-income students, foster youth, and students who are English language learners. What specific policy changes will you advocate in the upcoming year to address the needs of these populations to improve their educational outcomes?
This question assumes two things. The amount of parents' income determines the student's success at school. If you pay extra money to a student in a low-income family, he or she will get better grades at school. That's on now? Good. It is my belief that only children that are inspired will learn. All you need to do is inspire the children. If you receive extra money, use it to inspire all the children.
First, I want to clarify something. The word seems to be out that we have additional funding. That is not true. What is true is that we are at what I hope is the end of a nearly 40-year war on education. This state is dead last in the nation in per pupil expenditure and first in spending on incarceration. The governor has decided that enough is enough, that the schools deserve stable and even increasing funding, and that they deserve more local control over how those funds are spent. The LCFF and the LCAP are the legal processes to make this change. The days of smoke and mirrors for funding are over, we can all hope. What the question calls additional revenue is actually money dedicated to bringing our per pupil expenditure up from the basement over a period of seven years. The allocation, the LCFF allocation, is a function of the percentage of these target populations and our overall student population. The money is a restoration and not a windfall, and it's mostly spoken for. The budgeting was changed to eliminate most categorical funds and to allow local communities to have a say in how those funds are spent. We still need to show maintenance of effort in the targeted areas. I don't know that we need policy changes per se to address the populations of low-income foster youth and English language learners so much as we need continued steady progress in providing services and support for those youngsters. The district has established a Youth Services Coordinator for Foster Youth and enhanced our career tech offerings. Lori and I have been strong supporters of improving counseling programs, which are an example of what is needed. We have been working to improve attendance achievement and parental involvement.
Many policies have already changed a little bit to meet the new state requirements. I personally attended many of those community meetings that were held last year, which we did to gather input from our community. This year, the following has been added to Delnor County Unified School District. An additional teacher for Smith River to nearly eliminate combination classes. An additional ELL instructor assistant was added. Youth Service Coordinator, as Doc put it out. Funding PBIS for this year at the tune of about $84,000. Adding funding to support student attendance, expanding Saturday School, summer school return. Joe Hamilton, Margaret Katie, Smith River, more career technical, AKA vocab, R O B. I believe that all students need to succeed, and they want to succeed. My personal experience is we have a foster boy who came to us and started living with us a couple of years ago, and he came a full semester behind from another county. With the encouragement from the high school counselors and nudging, of course, from me at home, he not only caught up, he is going to graduate early. All kids want to succeed. They just need us to be there, to support them, to have counseling in the schools. We have what it takes. We just need to be there to encourage all the kids, and all the kids will succeed.
One thing I would like to change is to include some of... We have great new things that have been added, but not just to include them, but to promote them as well. The community needs to know some of the great support systems that are available for low-income youth, for foster youth, and for English as a second language families and youth. There are great programs, but not many people know about them even when they're in their own schools. A situation, I was going around on Facebook, and someone posted that they were looking for shoes for a boy that they had saw at the school bus stop. And they were just asking for someone to give donations. It was great to see the generosity of these community members which were put there, but not only will this probably student need some shoes, they probably need some extra support as well. When I chimed in and said, "These are also some services that that family might be needing. They can go to this place to get this service. There's a partner that works at the school district for this service. They can get school supplies here, clothes here," they're like, the community was surprised. And that was just within that child's school. So being able to communicate, there's more than just these wonderful resources, but how we can communicate it out to them, that the parents know, that students know, that teachers know, the staff know, so that when they do see these children, they don't fall in the cracks, that they are supported and they are lifted, and those resources that are there are being used for those students.
This is a very deep and difficult question. 69% of the student population in Delnor schools fall into one or more of the additional funding categories, either low-income, English learner, or foster youth. As a single parent, my own kids were in the low-income category and needed some additional resources and educational support for their learning success. So I know firsthand that help and support was not always easily accessible or available. I believe in making alternative types of education more readily accessible for all students that require it. As if elected or trustee, I would make it a priority to study current policies and regulations relative to alternative types of education. Where there are deficiencies, I would advocate for improvements to current policy and work to create additional policies and regulations to support not only the 69% of students that fall into those categories, but all students in our schools. I would also be open to talking to parents and community members about alternative types of education if elected as your trustee. Thank you.
The district is receiving approximately $2 million in increased local control funding formula, supplemental and concentration funding. $666,000 of the supplemental and concentration funds have been budgeted to specifically meet the needs of our targeted populations, English language learners, foster youth, and low-income. But did you know that 68% of Delnor students are included in one of these groups? I'm excited to say that by supporting these new policies, the Local Control and Accountability Plan and the Local Control Funding Formula will make improvements this year. This is not rhetoric. This is an exciting year for Delnor County. And we have partners who will work with us to ensure that we can address these needs with additional funding, with new policies and teaching practices, with additional training for the teachers, and then constantly monitoring the success and/or failure of these new policies by believing in our schools and our teachers and knowing that failure is not an option for Delnor County. Thanks to community input process, our community engaged in last year, we've created our own local goals outlining the Local Control Accountability Plan. Our local plans include hiring additional staff, improved tools for parental communication, continued class size reduction in K through 3, professional development for staff, increased compensation to recruit, and retain quality staff and teachers and classified personnel, as well as operational costs for the district. As a school board member, I will visit the As a school board member, I will visit District Five schools, in classrooms, attend community engagement meetings, and ensure the policies are being implemented properly at the board level.
I believe that the current school board has started taking the right steps, steps in the right direction by hiring on additional staff and counselors this year and working with the county on the foster youth program. For the low-income students, we need to ensure that these children are receiving adequate nutrition in both the school as well as at home. I personally have seen firsthand and fully understand what foster children could possibly be going through on a daily basis, and I feel it is critical to get them extra counseling for their personal issues as well as school issues. It is also imperative that these students have extra one-on-one tutoring to help keep them at the accurate level for their age of grade in spite of all the issues they could be facing at home. I would also ensure the district has adequate staff to accommodate the English language learners without going over the teacher-student ratio.
This is a group effort. Students, parents, teachers, and community members will or have prepared surveys on what they feel is the need to be implemented in the classroom and how the district will spend the flexibility of additional revenue money funds coming up. Over the past years, well, here at Crescent Elk, that I know, because there was five of us, that classified, that if a student came in the shoes, their toes were hanging out of their shoes, or graduation time came and we wanted always them to look like all the others, we would take them shopping or it would just appear a package for them. So I don't know if that's still around, but it was a joy for us.
Buenas tardes, good afternoon. My name is Annabelle Dominguez, and I've been involved in the organizing work for the past three years. Fourteen years ago, I graduated from Delnor High, and now I have two children that attend the Delnor Public Schools. I would like to play a bigger role in the decision-making process of my children's education as well as other parents that I know. Unfortunately, evening work schedules, language, transportation, all present barriers for us. We believe success education policy must include students, parents, and the community in the decision-making process. The Local Control Funding Formula requires that school district to involve parents, students, and public in planning in the decision-making, including the development of local control accountability plans. These plans are to be updated annually. What are your plans to involve parents, students, and community in decision-making around budget priorities, especially in the outlining communities?
The LCAP requires that districts involve students, parents, and community members in the setting of local priorities. I participated in several of the meetings held during the first round and I found them interesting and valuable. I think they will be increasingly so as the community becomes comfortable with participation. The planning each year is for the next three. During the last round of community meetings, participation was uneven across sites, and I think as we become more familiar with the process, we can find new ways to get the word out and to encourage participation. I understand True North is a new outfit dedicated to organizing community, and it may be that this organization could have a role in facilitating or encouraging LCAP meetings. I'd be open to that, and it would be especially helpful in outlining communities. I'd also like to add that the LCAP is in some ways a return to the past. Historically, local communities participated in local school funding and governance much more intimately. Funding was through property taxes. People could see the connection between what they paid and their schools. After the tax revolt capped property taxes, the state became the principal funder for schools and local control was diluted. The LCAP is returning some of that responsibility to local folks who historically have always been willing to support schools. It's about time. My hope is that as people increase their participation, they will buy in and also increase their support for initiatives and legislation at the state level which support education. Fiftieth out of fifty in per capita pupil expenditure is not okay. Our schools are not failing, but we have in many ways failed our schools, and that
The targeted population. As a board member, I will support the development of tracking systems and continued parental engagements that will ensure the district is held accountable to the plan and the benefit to the target populations. The district is taking a team to a California Endowment meeting in Oakland on October seventh. This group will be obtaining additional tools that will help us develop a monitoring system to assist the district and community to ensure that additional funding provides the benefit intended. As a board member, I will ensure the district's board is upholding its responsibility for accountability and transparency, as well as maintain a strong relationship with our critical partners to help us achieve our local goals.
As I stated in my opening statement, I believe that open and honest communication is essential, which is the first step to getting parents and the community involved in decision-making. The school board agendas are posted online, but it is difficult to navigate through them. I would like to see them streamlined and more user-friendly. I believe the district needs to use more social media outlets to ensure we reach as many community members as possible to let them know about topics on future agendas, what decisions are scheduled to be made, and general issues. Time is valuable, and I know with everyone's schedules, it is hard to make meetings. If people are aware of it and information is right at their fingertips without having to search for it, they are more likely to be involved. I believe that the district should host some of the LCAP workshops at the outlying area schools like Smith River, Margaret Keating, and Mountain School to give every one of those communities the opportunity to attend and be involved in the budget-making process
If elected as a board member, I would attend the meetings and talk to the school, see what their top choices would be for the use of these funds, working with the community groups, parents, students, in the planning and decision-making process. This will be an ongoing plan. As being semi-retired, I have a lot of daytime hours and evening hours available, so I will be out and around as much as I can. Thank you.
For many years, budgets put forward for trustee adoption were created by staff and administration. Those days are in the past. The Local Control Accountability Plan requires a full inclusion process of stakeholder groups within the jurisdiction of the public school agency in development of the agency's entire budget, not just bits and pieces of the budget that management wants to offer to the public. Trustees should be held accountable to ensure that administrative staff who work in their direction include all members of the public on the intake and development of the entire school district's budget. All stakeholders should be heard at every public meeting. There should not be separate meetings for different groups. After all, we are all community members and we all share an interest for a successful education community and successful educational outcome for all students and for the good and welfare of our communities within Delnor County.
Hello, everybody. My name is Manul Sevajra, and I am a youth leader with True North Organizing. I am also a high school graduate of Delnor, class of 2014. I am pursuing higher education to prevent a life of poverty for myself. I fear that I will not be fully prepared to be successful in College of the Redwoods. I don't want any future high school graduates to have the same fears. I want everyone to have equal access to high-quality education in order to be successful in college or workforce. Here's question number five. According to the U.S. Census Bureau, one in four people in Delnor County are living at or below the poverty line. Locally, the completion of two- or four-year college degree significantly increases one's earning potential. The percentage of high school graduates around California who have the necessary courses to enter a California State University has increased consecutively over the last five years. In that same period, the percentage of graduates from Delnor High Schools who have the necessary courses to enter a CSU has been declining. What are your specific plans to ensure that more graduates are adequately prepared to enter the workforce and/or further their career?
This is the reason that I am running for the school board. I believe that Delnor Unified School District does not prepare students for college or, for that matter, for life. To meet these changes is simple. One, go to the Cal State University system and ask them, what do they need for a freshman to know in reading, writing, math, science, history, and languages? Two, then divide that information by twelve and require each grade level to teach their twelve of the college requirements. The workforce, have vocational classes relevant to our community. Further education, teach curriculum that teaches life, the lessons of family budget, family food and diet, family childcare. All are important. It's just as important to know how to take care of a family as it is to run a small business. If you realize that a family, an average family in Delnor County earns forty thousand dollars a year, in ten years, that's going to be four hundred thousand dollars, that's a pretty big budget for a family to run. They need to know how to do it.
Question is interesting, but it leaves out an important piece of information. What is not considered is the impact of graduation rates, our graduation rates, on CSU eligibility rates. We recently graduated ninety-five percent of our students. The state average is eighty percent. The fifteen percent that we graduate who have not met the CSU requirements don't even make it to the finish line in most of the state. From one perspective, this reveals a strength in that our schools are managing to keep kids in schools who point to diploma who are not planning for college. Not everybody can or should go to college. High school graduation is important in itself. Economists and sociologists have found that if kids do just four things, they can pretty much immunize themselves against a life of poverty. Graduating from high school is one of those things. Further, graduation does make young people eligible to attend a JC, which can also lead to attendance at four-year schools. Our community can be proud of the effort our staff and administration have made to ensure many paths for our young people to accomplish this important life task. A famous educator once remarked that a society that values velocity over plumbing won't have theories or pipes that hold water. In that spirit, I also believe that we need to continue to improve access to career and life choices, planning for our young people. To that end, we have career technical education offerings in construction, materials manufacturing and production, auto mechanics, agricultural health and care pathways, and information technology. We are committed to increasing the number of offerings. Our school counselors do a great job, but they are limited by time and by having so many kids on their caseloads. As resources improve, I would like to improve career advising options.
Our counselors at our high school are great with working with our students who are planning on entering college to make sure that they are taking the necessary courses. We certainly offer all these courses at the high school and all required classes that are available for those who need them. And also, in order to improve on the district, it's supporting, right now, the district's supporting the expansion of our Avid program to include our seventh and eighth graders here at Crescent Elk and Smith River and Redwood to help them get down on their path as well. What I'd like to point out is, when I came on the board four years ago, the mind thought was, every kid must go to college. Well, that's not what is right for Delnor County. So the board went from all students must go to college to all students must be ready for college, career, or our community. We have brought back many of the career technical programs, the construction, the auto mechanics, the metalworking, welding, nursing technology, woodworking, agriculture. We want our kids to be ready when they leave here, whether they choose to go to college or to take the path directly into a job. We want them to be able to have those classes to get to where they want to be, and I believe that's what we offer them.
In two thousand and three, the school district with the help of College of the Redwoods, Delnor Economic Development Corporation. We're in talks with Sacramento State University to install some baccalaureate degrees here at College of the Redwoods in Delnor County, including biology, criminal justice, secondary education, and English. But due to some complications with the school board and the superintendent, those plans were dropped. I want to say, let's bring back that conversation, let's have it again, see why the conversation was dropped, and see if we can make that a reality. Part of not being able to go on to getting more education is the cost, and being able to provide a cost-efficient education will be great. In addition to offering some new education opportunities here in Delnor County, I have heard from several parents and graduates that Delnor High School, that truly bother me, some of the things that are happening is not just are the schools graded on where they get to go to college, but how well they are determining scholarships and other private education. A young man that I heard about, he was being able to be put on track to go to West Point or the U.S. Air Force Academy. He had a four-point-four GPA, had two congressional recommendations that were required, everything he needed to go, but because of the low scoring of how Delnor County High School scores in the state, he was denied. We need to fix that if you are going into something that is really competitive, that you are just as competitive with the other schools in the state and be able to fulfill
I believe that we need to ensure that each and every student has unrestricted access to career counselors beginning their eighth-grade year. Students aspiring to attend college upon graduation must be given the opportunity to talk with the career counselors and attend college prep courses. The counselors should follow up with each student at least once a semester to ensure that they stay on the right path for college and are taking the necessary courses to enter the college that they wish to attend. While college isn't for everyone, we need to make sure that these students who are choosing not to attend college have vocational trades available so they can join the workforce with some skills. We need to ensure that they are taught how to fill out an application with legible handwriting, how to write a resume, how to search for jobs related to their skills, and how to prepare for an interview. In my current human resources position, I see firsthand every day they need to teach every student these basics. All students need to know that whatever path they choose, that it will take hard work, dedication, and determination to succeed.
If there are students that are in need of higher education and there's not enough students to form a class, then the district should be able to pick up them to go online and do an online class of some type. That way, you're saving eighty thousand for a teacher, and then still the student is not held back, and he's able to take his online classes to further all of his needs, his or her needs. Working with College of the Redwoods would be really great, or even any of the other colleges. I'm sure Humboldt has courses. I've taken a lot of online courses to get classes in if they're not available here. But that's my feeling on it. The opportunity is there, but they have to work for it too. Thank you.
I believe that the answer to this
I believe that the answer to this question ties back into the last question. It starts with the community electing trustees that understand the community need, being in tune with the community we serve, and community members taking an active role in participating in public meetings. Once our community elects a trustee on November 4th, we should not believe that the trustees know the will of the community in all matters that develop over the next four years. Participation of the public in our democracy requires action. This is one of the reasons why the LCAP is so important in changing the type of success outcomes we say we all want. Yes, there are challenges with higher education in rural areas. When community colleges, state universities, and state colleges are a part of our day-to-day conversations with our children, they come to expect that their life success will require higher levels of education. The reality is, we live in a rural area, and these conversations are not generally a part of our day-to-day life. This fact makes it even more important than ever that an expectation and successful student learning plans are a part of our conversations in elementary school, in middle school, in high school, at home, and within our community at large. We can influence these changes and expectations in the budget development process by directing how the district will allocate its revenues and spend money in such a way that makes our community's goals and objectives its highest priority. Once the community participates in the process, the Board of Trustees can then adopt that budget as its own, and we can all have ownership of our students and the future of our community.
One of the first issues is school attendance. Back in 2011, a study revealed a severely concerning chronic absenteeism problem in the Delmar School District, particularly concerning where the high rates among early grades. It seemed pretty obvious that if kindergartners and first graders are not under C's, they will not be leading a third grade and not on the way to success in education. As a board member, I will support policies and strategies to improve school attendance, including really understanding the pressure on families that are causing chronic absences. I will support the full implementation of a district-wide restorative justice process to reduce suspension and expulsion rates. As a school member, I will work with our various schools and staff to ensure that the resources are in place for all students to be well-prepared. For example, we need qualified teachers teaching Algebra I in all seventh and eighth grades and access to foreign language teachers at earlier grades. As a board member, I will also support the full implementation of career technical education across all disciplines, integrating core academic knowledge with real-life job skills to provide students with a pathway to pro-secondary education and careers. I will support the partnership with College of the Redwoods to leverage the career tech and opportunities and other offerings to benefit our students. We don't know what tomorrow's jobs will be, and we know that our future depends on a strong workforce in which critical thinking and problem-solving skills can be applied in any context. I thank you for this opportunity to speak to you, and welcome me up to meet with any of you upon my return on October 14th. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your answers. And now I'd like to introduce Pat Black. She's going to come up and talk to us about future steps and to wrap up.
Hi, my name's Patricia Black, and I'm a member of the True North Organizing Network. In my thirty-seven years of living in Delmar County, working at the Social Security Administration for the Delmar Community Health Center, teaching at the high school in CR, working with the United and the Census Bureau, and also being a member of St. Paul's Episcopal Church, I have seen so much that is so good about our county. But I've also seen unfairness and inequity, and I believe that needs to be changed. My involvement with True North is it is a vote that we can have, that everyone will have an equal voice. I'd like to thank the candidates for taking their time out of their busy days to come and be with us tonight. I really appreciate that. Would you please give them a round of applause? Now, True North has one more question for you. If elected, will you commit to meeting with us within the first sixty days after your elec, after taking office to discuss these concerns that we brought up tonight and other concerns that have arisen out of the conversations we've had with community members? I'll ask you each one, and please just answer yes or no. Don McArthur. Milton Riley.
Yes, absolutely.
Lori Cohen. Thank you. Angela Grino.
Yes.
Thank you. JP Fortner. Beth Green. Rodney Sorensen.
Yes, of course.
And Janice Wortman.
The answer is yes.
As I look at the people that are here tonight, I have so much hope for our future. I'd like us to take a minute for you all to see what I'm seeing. Just look around and see all the different community groups that are involved tonight at this meeting. Take this minute to introduce yourself to the person behind you. Thank you. There will be an opportunity afterwards to continue that conversation. You've taken the first step today by showing up. And the next step is voting on November 4th. In your pockets is a commitment card. Please take it out and fill it out now. If you are eligible to vote, we ask you to show your commitment by filling out this card. If you are eligible to vote but have not registered, we ask you to show your commitment by filling out this card. And you will have an opportunity to register at the tables right back over there where you came in. If you are not eligible to vote, you still have the power to make change by encouraging others to vote. And so, if you are not eligible to vote, we ask you to show your commitment by filling out this card. Our ushers are coming up the aisles with baskets and will be collecting these cards. Okay, keep the cards coming. I'd like us to take a moment to make that commitment to vote to each other. Stand up if you are willing to contribute your part to ensuring that turnout in this November 4th election is the highest it has ever been.